I hereby open the regular session of the planning commission. Sandy, can we get a roll call? Present.
Vice Chair Bergen.
Here.
Commissioner Schmunk.
Here.
Present.
Thompson called to say that he has siblings in the family, so is not.
Thank you, Sandy. Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? All right, seeing none, I'll now move to the pledge of allegiance. Those in attendance in person, please recite the pledge. Others online are muted.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item is approval of minutes from the January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes as published in the packet? All right, seeing none, I, the minutes are hereby approved with no corrections. We'll now move to business from the audience. This is a time in our agenda for the public to provide testimony on any relevant, any topic relevant to the planning commission. Sarah, has anyone in the chambers request, filled out a request to speak card? All right. All right, and I don't see anyone. If you are joining us online, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or star nine if joining by phone. All right, seeing none. We will now move on to our agenda item for the zoning map amendment or two, four, two, five Harvest Lane. And but before we get to that, Christina Kreuz is going to explain the quasi judicial hearing process for us.
Thank you, Chair. And I know that this is also the first quasi quasi judicial hearing the planning commission has had in the last year. So it would be good, I think, for me to go a little slower than I normally do so that everyone can hear the statement on legal rights. The role of the planning commission is to conduct public hearings and to make decisions about land use matters in Springfield. In making those decisions, the commission must apply the law of Springfield that existed when the application was filed and cannot vary from or change that law. Members of the planning commission must be unbiased. Before the start of the hearing, members of the commission will state whether they have any conflicts of interest such as family, financial or business relationships with any of the applicants or with regard to the land in question. If such a potential conflict exists, the commissioner must state whether he or she is without actual bias or whether he or she would like to step down from the planning commission during the case. And if planning commissioners have actual conflicts of interest, they must step down from the planning commission during the case. Planning commissioners will also state whether they've discussed the application in question with any of the parties or have any independent knowledge of relevant facts, such as from a visit to the site in question. If any planning commissioners have had such contacts, they must disclose the substance of substance of that contact. If a planning commissioner has independent knowledge of relevant facts, the planning commissioner will summarize those facts. During the time for public testimony, a witness may challenge the impartiality of a planning commissioner and may rebut the substance of a planning commissioner's knowledge of facts. The commissioner in question may respond to such a challenge. A copy of the procedures and agenda for the hearing and copies of the staff reports have been posted on Springfield Oregon Speaks.org. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral or written testimony or both. To preserve your right to appeal the decision to the city council and ultimately Land Use Board of Appeals, you must testify orally or in writing before the planning commission closes the public record, which may be tonight or at a later meeting. If you want the planning commission to consider your testimony, you must testify before the planning commission closes the record. You must raise an issue clearly enough so that people can understand what it is and offer evidence in support of it, or else you cannot raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. If you are the applicant, you must raise concerns about any conditions of approval clearly enough to allow the planning commission to respond to preserve your right to seek damages in circuit court. If you feel you need more time to prepare evidence or testimony for the planning commission, you can ask the commission open the record or to continue the hearing, you must make the request before the chair closes the public portion of the hearing. If the planning commission holds open the record, you can submit additional written testimony and evidence into the record before the commission makes a decision. If the planning commission continues the hearing, then oral and written testimony, including new evidence, can be offered at a future hearing. Regardless of whether the hearing is continued or the record is held open for any other reason, state law provides we must hold open the record for at least seven days after it is closed to all other parties to allow the applicant to submit final written arguments in support of an application unless the applicant waives their right. Make sure that all testimony is related to the applicable criteria. The criteria for zoning map amendments are provided in Springfield Development Code five point two, two point one fifteen subsection C. They are described in more detail in the staff report and posted on Springfield Oregon Speaks.org and will be summarized by staff in the presentation this evening. Demonstrations from the audience are prohibited. Comments from the audience or comments by phone or online that are out of turn are not part of the record. If anyone would like to speak to this application and is here in person, please fill out a request to speak card and present it to the planning commission assistant. If joining online, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine to join in by phone. When called upon to speak, it is important to state your name and mailing address. Keep comments to three minutes unless approved otherwise by the chair. If you represent someone else, please say so. If you have any exhibits you want the commission to consider, such as copies of testimony, photographs, petitions, other documents or physical evidence, please provide it to the planning commission assistant before the written record is closed. Okay, Chair, it is now appropriate to open the public hearing and ask if any planning commissioner wishes to declare potential conflicts of interest or actual conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts or independent knowledge of relevant facts.
Thank you, Christina. We will now open the public hearing and begin by asking commissioners to disclose ex parte contacts or conflicts of interest. Sandy, would you mind calling the commissioners?
I'll start with Vice Chair Bergen.
Thank you. Potential conflict of interest being a Realtor. The next potential conflict of interest is I attend Northwood Church on a regular basis, but have no financial gain from Northwood. And then finally is I live within proximity.
And are you an officer or employee of the church organization that owns the property?
No.
Okay, and you're and you would not be biased and you'll evaluate the evidence based on what's presented and not based on any actual bias, correct?
Correct. Thank you. And that last one was residential property owner within proximity.
Chair Salazar.
I have no ex parte contacts or conflicts of interest.
And Commissioner Schmunk? Commissioner Buck?
None, other than I do have some knowledge having been by the site. And and all of that, I'm aware of that. Other biases.
If any of your, if any of your knowledge related to being traveling near the site becomes relevant to your decision and isn't otherwise on the record, then you'll need to make that known before the public hearing is closed. Otherwise, if it's not relevant to, if driving past the site didn't tell you anything about it, that's relevant to the decision then, or it's already in the record, then there's no need to further declare more details.
All right, excellent. Next, we'll move to the staff report from Andy Limbert.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. I'm just going to, normally I'd be at the podium here, but unfortunately you don't have the remote control for PowerPoint anymore. So I'm just gonna bring up a PowerPoint that you have in your packet up for the benefit of others that are joining us and for purposes of establishing context. I'm gonna hopefully be able to start the slideshow. We'll see.
The bottom right icon that looks like a projector screen.
Move this bar over. There. All right, apologies, too many windows open at the same time. Okay, so the second question is in northwest Springfield in the Hayden Bridge neighborhood, just at the intersection of Hayden Bridge Road and Harvest Lane. And it is annexed to the city of Springfield. It's across the street, just somewhat diagonally from Page Elementary School. The surrounding territories are unincorporated portions of UGB. So this site is surrounded by Lane County jurisdiction streets as well as unincorporated properties that are within the city's urban growth boundary. The current zoning for the site is low density residential or R1 residential district. It has a discretionary use permit for the church to be located on the site, and that was obtained, I believe, in two thousand and three. And so the applicant is proposing to change the zoning from R1 residential to neighborhood commercial. The staff report you have in support of this application, staff has revisited the staff report since it was prepared and there were conditions that were attached to recommended conditions of approval. Staff has pared back the recommended adopted staff report and eliminated conditions of approval. And I can go through those as necessary. There was, I guess, in summary, an over analysis of the applicant's traffic impact analysis and their proposed trip cap on the site. It is not necessary for a trip cap to be imposed upon the site. The applicant has elected to do that voluntarily. So there is no need to have a condition for them to enact that trip cap. Those were the conditions that were attached to the staff report. So the staff report has been pared back to eliminate some findings and those conditions of approval, and I can go through that if necessary. The staff report, also the version that was posted, unfortunately, contained one unadopted change in and had the track changes function. And it was accepted as changes. But one of the things involved with multiple reviewers and so on, unfortunately, that escaped detection and made it into the packet. But however, the text itself is is applicable. Just that the red font was was noted in the in the final report. So the criteria of approval we have before you this evening are on the screen. Based on the staff report and findings that have been provided and the applicant's submittal, staff submits that it does meet the criteria of approval. The applicant is here this evening, if you have any specific questions, and did you want me to go through the?
Can you read the the criteria, the just see one, two, three and five? Because it's impossible to read that from here. And if I can't read it from here, no one can read it.
Sure, and I don't know if I'm, it would be nice if I could get a full size screen, but I can't. So, so the zoning map amendment criteria of approval, number one, consistency with applicable metro plan policies and the metro plan diagram. And sub two is consistent consistency with applicable refinement plans, plan district maps, conceptual development plans and functional plans. Number three, the property is presently provided with adequate public facilities, services and transportation networks to support the use or these facilities, services and transportation networks are planned to be provided concurrently with the development of the property. Number four, meet the approved criteria specified in section five point one, four dash or point one hundred when involving a metro plan diagram amendment. And number five, comply with Oregon administrative rules, OAR six, six, oh, dash zero, one, two, dash zero, zero, six, zero, when applicable or where applicable. There is not a metro plan diagram involved with this application, so and as pointed out, the staff reports criterion four is not applicable to this. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Did you want me to go through the changes in the staff report? Okay, let me bring that up, too. Apologies. Let me stop the share of the this, let me bring up the word diagram. Let me then share that if I can. This is not in the packet. It's correct. This this amended version is not in the packet. It's essentially a, there are some clarification provided, but also some strike through of of information. So the first change is on page number six of your packet, and that was where there was a finding that had the track changes still enacted, so that's been accepted. Believe that was in number fifteen, I think fifteen.
Andy, if you can make that navigation thing go way up.
Can I do it?
Left, left.
Oh, sorry.
Your document. Yeah.
Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. It's odd to have the all the controls on the wall, so. So the changes are substantially relate to criterion number six, I believe, which is the sorry, criterion number five, which is the Oregon administrative rule six, six, oh, oh, one, two, oh, six, oh, six, oh, which is a transportation planning rule. And so staff had added quite a bit of analysis on. It's all been excised from it. I need to show the changes. So I need to show all the changes. Yeah, so staff recommends that the report be amended to agree with the applicant's findings in their transportation impact analysis, incorporate them by reference, particularly their references to subsection nine of the TPR, which essentially eliminates the requirement to go further into detail on whether there's a significant effect, whether chip cap is implemented, how that can be enacted, which is the substance of all this finding, starting when finding thirty-two and carrying forward through a number of other findings to the end with the conditions of approval. So staff is recommending that the conditions be eliminated and a number of conditions, sorry, findings related to the TPR analysis and analysis of their applicants to IA pertaining to whether they meet a significant affect, what a significant affect is, et cetera. They're not germane to the discussion or whether they need the criteria they already do. So it's superfluous information that may just tend to confuse readers as to whether they have met the criterion or not, and they have. So that is a recommendation of staff to provide some clarification. Also, that the trip cap that the applicant is providing is accepted as a proposed, but it's not something that the city is going to condition or to enforce. So that's, they have already met the required approval standards, as noted in this section right here.
Andy, I think it might be helpful if you can just kind of go over that, that the planning is consistent with the zoning. There's, you know, the transportation system plan, the the streets are in there as, you know, what those three standards are in the OAR that they meet.
Yeah, the
Call those out.
Sure, this, we can go back in this, and the applicant has identified them in their narrative. So if they meet in meeting criterion nine, if the proposed zoning is consistent with existing comprehensive plan map designation and the amendment does not change a comprehensive plan map, that is correct. Neighborhood commercial zoning is consistent with and can be applied to residential zoned and designated sites. So they have met that requirement. Subsection B, the local government has an acknowledged TSP or transportation system plan, and the proposed zoning is consistent with that TSP. The city of Springfield does have an acknowledged transportation system plan. And so this zoning that's being proposed is consistent with that, so that's met B. And for C, the area subject to the zoning map amendment was not exempted from this rule at the time of a urban growth boundary amendment. I won't read the whole rest of it. This area was well within, inside the urban growth boundary, has been for a long period of time. And so the city's TSP has originally developed and is subsequently modified and updated, has always included this site. So it has not been exempted from this rule. So they've met all of those criterion, and so there would be no need to delve further into the transportation analysis like staff did. So there was added, we added, I guess, superfluous information to the staff report that really didn't need to be there. And I guess only served to kind of dilute the applicant's own materials and own argument that they've met the the criterion, so. But that's clear. So apologies that it's essentially revisited and decided to like, we need to pare this back quite a bit. But all of the information is still pertinent. The applicant's materials in support of the application are relevant and applicable. They've been found by staff and particularly the city's transportation planning engineer to be consistent with requirements for analysis of this site. And they also meet the requirements of the county, who, the county being the authority for maintenance and operations of the streets, including the signal, traffic signal at Harvest Lane and Hayden Bridge Road. Also, for the time being, count, Lane County is the transportation operations authority for for those streets.
Excellent. Thank you, Andy. And we'll have an opportunity to ask Andy or staff in general questions after hearing from the applicant and anyone from the public who wants to provide testimony as well. But first, we'll take a presentation from the applicant who you mentioned is here.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Bill Randall, architect with Arbor South Architecture, three eighty. And we represent the owner, Northwood Christian Church. I'm going to just let our submitted testimony stand as we did here. As we've stated, though, the church is relocating to a new facility that is under construction.
My God, I've turned it up, but we're still not really hearing you, so. Would you mind? Because I don't think that's anywhere there, but I turned it up.
Okay, thanks, Andy.
Oh, perfect.
That's better.
Yes.
Yeah, well, repeat. I'm Bill Randall, architect with Arbor South Architecture, three eighty Lincoln Street, Eugene, and we represent the owner, Northwood Christian Church on this zone change. I'm just going to let our submitted testimony stand as we submitted it and not reread it here. As we've stated, the church is relocating to a new facility at Markola and V Streets, and they're wanting to repurpose their existing facility on Harvest Lane. This zone change will make that possible. And beyond that, I'm available to answer any questions you as a commission might have for us. And again, we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, and thank you for humoring us and
No, no worries.
All right, so next we'll take and we'll have a chance to to ask questions of the applicant as well. But first, we'll hear public testimony. Is there anyone who'd like to give public testimony in favor of the application? And please do and please state your name and mailing address and keep your comments to three minutes.
My name is David Cole, fourteen eighty-five Hayden Bridge Road. I live about a block away from the site. I'm excited to see how this site might be used differently or perhaps the same way. I don't depend on what any future user may use. I do support the zoning change to the neighborhood commercial. I think that's a good use for the site. There's a lot of vitality in the area that could be enhanced by having other uses of that site. We've got the school right there, the park right there. Traffics, there's all kinds of traffic. A little more is not going to make any difference, and it's not clear that whoever uses it would even have more traffic. So I'm pretty excited about what this could bring to my neighborhood.
All right, thank you. Any other testimony in favor of the application, either in the council chambers or online? All right, next we'll take testimony that is neither in favor nor opposed. All right, seeing none, we will now take any testimony that is opposed to the application. All right, seeing none, and I just want to give the staff any opportunity to give response to any testimony that we heard.
I guess, in in the absence of testimony, just apologies for oh, someone is asking to respond to neither in favor nor opposed.
Okay, we'll hear from you next, Will, and please do share your name for the record and mailing address.
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, just had to get our settings just right. This is Will and Kathy Simpson. We live at fourteen sixty-six Hayden Bridge Road, right in the cul-de-sac next to the site. The only thing we're trying to understand and having trouble finding online exactly what the non or the neighborhood commercial would permit in the future, because we're just curious, like, if this is opened up, what could it eventually be down the line if a new resident came into that site and what that would mean for us being right next door? That's all.
Thank you very much. All right, and yeah, hearing no testimony opposed to the application, give you an
Second, I can provide some clarification. Under neighborhood commercial, there would be retail stores, convenience stores, eating and drinking establishments, like restaurants, either fast food or sit-down restaurants. Professional offices also would be allowable under neighborhood commercial. And that's not the proposal here, but it it's with the zoning, there is the possibility that those types of uses could potentially locate on the site. Thank you very much for clarifying. We have someone else here for their hand is up.
Yeah, and Drew will give you, and thank you for, yeah, those questions, Simpsons, and we'll give Drew a chance to provide testimony. I also see, Christina, did you want to respond at all to the previous question?
I was gonna give a code reference if the, there was an interest in looking it up directly.
I think it should be three point two, point three, ten.
Correct. So for the, yeah, for the neighborhood commercial, there is a long list of what are permitted, and it is three point two, three, ten, I believe, although I'm not totally sure that this is our current code now. This may be not updated when we adopted new code. But three point two, three hundred, that general section includes the standards for development and commercial zoning districts, and so neighborhood commercial is listed under there. And anyone who's interested in seeing the potentially allowed uses can review that. There are also special standards that apply to certain development and neighborhood commercial that are intended to capture it at more neighborhood scale that would be applied to changes of use or actual uses that come in for approval.
All right, thank you very much. And Drew, we'll let you go next, and please do state your name, your mailing address, and also whether you're in favor, neither in favor nor opposed or opposed to the application.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Drew Davis, two, four, four, five, DuMonte Drive. And actually, I am opposed to the site as people are skipping over a lot of the traffic issues that we already have here. Is actually already a very busy street, especially with the school next door. My kids go to school right across the street there, and it is very congested. We are in the walk zone. We've had issues where our children have almost been hit because of the traffic. I'm afraid that with more traffic, it's just going to create more of an issue. Also, the, there's really no plan as to what is going to go in place over there. It says for medical offices, I don't see that happening as we have medical offices on both ends of Hayden. One currently built right on Harlow Road. What I think will probably end up happening is more low income housing as it could be zoned out for or apartments or duplexes, triplexes. I'm not sure what that's going to bring to the neighborhood. I understand, you know, the location would be a good spot for that. I just don't know that that's right for this neighborhood as everything here is already zoned residential, single-family use. And I'm afraid that kind of opens the door to start changing things in the neighborhood. Okay, I think that's all I have at the moment. And I could keep going on about it, but I'm gonna stop there.
We appreciate your testimony, Drew. Thank you. Andy, do, and we'll also give other folks either in person or online a chance to give testimony. I know there's sometimes some technical issues.
I'm hearing, hearing nothing or seeing, I don't see any other hands raised.
Um, hearing, hearing nothing or seeing, I don't see any other hands raised. Um, it's just in response to one, um, aspect of um, Mr. Davis's testimony, um, the change of zoning essentially precludes some type of residential use, including low-income housing, affordable housing, um, change to neighborhood commercial essentially turns the focus to a different type of use other than residential, um, even, you know, short-term housing or anything like that that could be associated with a church, for example. Um, so that is, I guess, one aspect that would the door would essentially be closing on the, the potential for, uh, residential use on the site with this change of zoning. Could have to be changed to either another type of zoning for residential or revert back through another public hearing process and application process um, in order for some residential to be on the site. Um, the, the building itself, um, as staff had identified in the staff report, um, it's could potentially be reused for residential, but it's the way that the church is configured and the way that churches are generally designed often with large gathering spaces, they're not really conducive to, um, breaking down into dri- living units, so to speak. Um, and so the, the value of the site is in the building. Um, and so the reuse of the building, um, generally into some type of commercial use, it's, it's I guess easier, more feasible to envision that than, um, somehow trying to convert it into some type of residential use, at least with this particular type of church and its configuration. Um, it also would be limited to in by the zoning to like a care facility. Um, you know, like, uh, like a, a neat nursing home or assisted living facility. Those would be the only kinds of uses that would be allowable in the R N residential district uh, for that sa- size and scope, um, of building. So, um, it's somewhat self-limiting, um, as, as to what else could be on the site.
I, yeah, I do want to jump in real quick. Um, specific to housing that is required to be affordable and covered by a affordable housing covenant. Um, state law does require that we have, we allow affordable housing on certain properties, which includes neighborhood commercial. So, um, I, I just wanted to correct that aspect of it. Market rate housing or standard housing development on the site would be precluded by a change to neighborhood commercial, but under state law, as we've implemented it through section four point seven, point four oh five, which is required by O R S one ninety-seven point three oh eight, um, we must allow affordable housing as defined under state law. Um, if the, if in a number of different circumstances, one of which is if a property that's owned by a nonprofit or an organization organizes a religious corporation. So if it remained a church under the R one and discretion or use approval, it affordable housing would have to be allowed on that property. Um, or if it's within, um, a number of commercial zones, which includes neighborhood commercial. Um, so in that way, it is no change from what we are required to allow for affordable housing development.
Any other response from staff?
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, but I'm also noticing that Will Simpson has, um, added some testimony in the chat, and we need that to be on the record. So, um, maybe we could ask him to speak to that.
Will, uh, we're not able to save the, um, comments that are in the chat for the record. So would you mind, um, saying those out loud so that we have them in the record? Um, you're a little garbled.
Uh, can you hear me now?
That's better.
All right, sorry. Um, I just want to be on the record that, uh, we would be opposed to the rezoning if it could be in potential use for restaurant and or bar uh, or just ge- general commercial use in short. This is too close to several residents as well as the elementary school. And we agree with Drew in his previous points as well.
Thank you very much. Um, any staff, um, comment on?
I'm just gonna recommend real quick that we complete all, make sure everybody's had a chance to testify. We're starting to get into a back and forth. I'm gonna recommend against that because it makes it difficult to have a quasi judicial hearing, um, operate and consistent with our requirements under state law. So I think this sort of final call for testimony that needs to be shared. And then I think we should move forward with the procedures and the development code.
Great point. Um, any final? And we, I, I think we took, took that one, um, item just because it had been written down. Um, typically we wouldn't take testimony from someone twice in one meeting. Um, any other additional, um, testimony from folks we haven't heard from yet?
The applicant will get the final. I just want to make sure the applicant knows that the applicant will get the final opportunity after response.
All right. And, um, okay, seeing no other additional testimony, um, and has staff had a chance to, um, respond to all items before we move to applicant rebuttal?
Um, I'd just like to point out one other thing, and that is that this is not the last, um, opportunity for um, public review and comment on development plans. Um, the concern, and I guess expressed by, um, testimony here was that we don't see a plan. We don't, we don't know what's happening uh, for a change of use if a new occupant, um, is to be going into this building or if they're going to be reconfiguring the site somehow, um, to accommodate their needs of for medical office clinic. Um, those will have to go through a type-two land use application process because it's surrounded by residential zoning. There's not an opportunity for a simpler and more streamlined uh, review where a new, um, occupant can just move into the building without any, any notice given. So it would be a type-two, uh, site plan review, which includes, um, public notice to the neighborhood. Um, it would not include a public hearing. It wouldn't come to the planning commission. Um, but the development plans would be known. The site would be, um, posted, um, by the developer. And the app, um, the community would have an opportunity to review the plans to see what's being proposed. As an example, there may be floor plans showing how offices are going to be set up in the building. Um, if there's going to be a change of the building facade to make it less of a religious type of motif, more of a medical motif, um, those types of changes that might be, um, applicable to the site. Um, additional, um, accessible parking in the parking lot, more landscaping, you know, et cetera. Um, those changes would be captured in the site plan. Um, and similarly, if it were to be converted to something non-medical, non-office, um, and it was proposed as a restaurant or a, a portion of the site to be a, a cafe or something like that, that also would be part of, of the plans. And then the applicant would have an oppor- or the the community, the residents in the neighborhood would have an opportunity to review and to comment. Um, and the applicant would have to then, um, provide an explanation or, um, justification for changes to the plans that they're presenting.
Thank you, Andy. We'll now take any rebuttal that the applicant may have. No, uh, rebuttal. Um, now is the time for questions from the planning commission. Any questions for, uh, staff, um, or the applicant? Commissioners?
Go ahead. Well, I guess my, my, my largest question is, um, and the Simpsons pointed this out. The range of, uh, available, um, uh, uh, businesses in this, uh, neighborhood commercial. Um, is it fair to say that, that, that it would allow businesses or, um, clinics, what have you, that the neighborhood would not like, uh, irrespective of, you know, the code and, and such? I mean, there's gonna be a whole host of, um, neighborhood commercial that could fit in there. Um, so of the range that you understand, likely there's something in that that the neighborhood really wouldn't like. It'd be very inconsistent with what's there now.
Um, I guess they potentially, um, although that's, that's not the information that we have, but it, it ended like a worst-case scenario. Um, you know, the site, either the building could be converted or it could be demolished and rebuilt with a, a seven eleven and then, uh, you know, fuels, fuel station, um, McDonald's, you know, that sort of thing. Um, whether that would occur or not, um, I, it's hard to say because of, I guess, the significant value associated with the existing building, uh, to clear the site would essentially eliminate that reuse opportunity. And that's what the applicant is proposing is a reuse, um, of a pretty large and otherwise, um, um, difficult to reoccupy building unless there's another congregation, for example, that would want to move into that church after Northwood, um, moves to their new facility. Um, and apparently that's not the case here. There is some, presumably some type of medical um, user that has expressed an interest, and that's what's driving this application, um, that they're seeking to achieve a land transaction by rezoning at first so that the, um, medical officer and or clinics can, uh, then make their own plans to how to reuse the site. Um, whether they could, they could potentially add more to the site, um, in the future, they could add, uh, an additional use. Again, that would be within the range of the zoning, but it would require um, a site plan that would have to be approved and have to go through, uh, public comment period as well. So the, the applicant has identified kind of the worst-case scenario, reasonable worst-case scenario, which would be like a retail shopping plaza, but that would, I guess, presume more or less a redevelopment of the whole site, um, with like a strip mall and, you know, other types of buildings. Um, in that, in this case, um, that I guess that's doesn't seem as feasible as the reuse of the building. Um, so that's where the focus of the attention of staff has been is based on um, our understanding of where they, how they wish to reuse the building and, and, and occupy the site in the more, in the, in the near term.
Uh, one more question. So, uh, if you were, let's say, a Markola Meadows, for example, is this the type of building you would um, envision them plopping down in the size of a, a parcel? Um, uh, is this consistent with what you would expect, um, neighborhood commercial to look like in, uh, say, a new, a new environment, uh, such as that?
Um.
Are, are you understanding my question? In other words, this building, this is a single building.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, specific use, gonna be significant changes to make it to something else. Um, but if, if this was raw ground and they were wanting to stick something in the middle of the neighborhood, which is what this is to me, it's a, it's a neighborhood. Um, and, um, the, the church is consistent with that, but I'm not sure I see these, um, uh, neighborhood commercial, uh, op- options to be consistent with the property, but, uh, so.
So I, I, I'll, I'll comment on what I do know about the, the Markola Meadows neighborhood, and they down, uh, they essentially eliminated, um, about forty acres of commercial zoning and went down to ten acres total, eight of which is occupied by the Northwood Church. The other two acres are two separate sites right at the corner of, um, and they're about roughly one acre each. So two acres total remaining for the entire Markola Meadows neighborhood at the corner of twenty-eighth and Markola Road. One of the sites we understand, um, actually, I believe has been purchased by a medical practitioner uh, for a medical office. So there will be a, a medical center potentially on the corner of twenty-eighth and Markola Road. Um, right at the northwest corner there. The other then would be one acre commercial site that presumably would be something, maybe a, a convenience store, a Dairy Mart type store, um, maybe have like a, a coffee bar or something located within it. And then that's for that size of neighborhood. So it's, I would, I would suggest that if this were a new build situation, it's probably larger than the market seems to be supporting right now. Um, but commercial land demand seemed to fluctuate. I think if this were a new development, a new neighborhood, it'd probably be more residential and less commercial on this particular site. Just based on the density of the use in the area and the other competing sites in the vicinity. But I'm not, I'm not a commercial real estate agent or anything like that. It just seems to be what the market is providing right now, um, in a new-built situation. It seems that the site is actually larger than probably would be normally viable in a neighborhood.
Commissioner Buck?
Thank you, Chair. Um, you know, I just want to say that I, I I share some of the concerns kind of brought up. It, you know, it seems like there's a a wide, wide variety. Is, is, is that? Christina, um, did I understand you correctly that within this, uh, zoning that affordable housing would still be allowable based on the statutes?
Correct. State law really requires us to allow affordable housing broadly throughout the community in a lot of zones. So the dis- the factor of whether or not this decision impacts the likelihood or possibility of affordable housing locating on this site, I don't think is relevant to your decision because either decision you make has the same, the, the outcome is the same. There's no change.
Gotcha.
There. Um, I do want to highlight that there are specific development standards um, for development in the neighborhood commercial zone that are different in terms of the size setbacks. Um, and, and those, you know, types of development regulations that don't get applied at a zone change but get applied down the road. Those are different for neighborhood commercial and would apply to whatever development locates there and are generally, um, larger setbacks than are required for residential. Um, and for other types of commercial, like community commercial or major retail commercial, which are the more, um, th- those would be examples of those zones are like along Main Street or Gateway Mall area. Um, so it is intended to be a smaller scale development, um, in terms of setbacks and all of those. And Andy would know whether the existing building, whether there's any concern that the existing building doesn't become non-conforming as to those standards.
Um, I would suggest that they, it would not because, um, the, uh, church or religious institution requires, um, larger setbacks from residential boundaries as well. So the church built more in like a campus-type environment. Um, which again, it could, is more conducive to kind of a medical campus type of, um, environment than being right out against the road, right? Um, you know, visible, highly visible, that would be, you know, a normal type of commercial use would be right at the street corner, right at the lights, um, to capture the drive-by traffic. And that's not what's being proposed currently.
Um, and then I guess the second question, um, that comes to mind, uh, I'm not necessarily sure the best way to formulate it. This doesn't sound like a statement, but um, and when I think about the, the wide variety of use that could go in there and, uh, the potential for interfacing with kids before and after school. Um, I, I wonder, you know, we talked about the, the traffic not, there's, there's a comprehensive, uh, analysis done, um, that goes into great detail as to how it would impact it and the number of trips that it would, uh, increase. But I'm wondering if, uh, some consideration to the, the safety of, of kids and foot traffic and those kinds of things, um, needs to be considered because right now for, for a church, the highest amount is, is on a, is on a Sunday, presumably when school's not in session. But if there were higher traffic volumes, say at eight o'clock and three o'clock when those school transitions happen, um, I, I wonder about those, the, the safety, uh, pieces that are in place, crosswalks, those kind of things. Um, has that been considered with, with, with this piece? Um, I didn't see that specifically noted in the traffic design, but it is a consideration for me.
And Andy, I have a, actually, before you respond, I have a, a related question. I understand that, my understanding is that the voluntary trip cap that the, the applicant has proposed doesn't have a standing on the specific criteria of approval um, for this zoning map amendment. But, um, just for the public certification, maybe for, for our, um, edification as a body, just if that voluntary trip cap was to be put in place, um, what impacts that might have on any future development for the site?
Um, based on the applicant's submittal, my recollection would, it would limit the development on the site to about forty percent of the maximum intensity of use, like the, the reasonable worst-case scenario, I think it was something like two hundred and sixty-four trips. Peak hour trips could be generated by a shopping plaza. So a one hundred, um, peak hour trip, um, trip cap, um, would be roughly forty percent of that. And therefore would, I guess, reduce the types and intensities and, and I guess scale of development on the site if we were, if we were to redevelop. Um, they did not go into analysis of the safety factor for the school. Um, that would be something that would be, I guess, an ongoing concern with traffic operations, both from the city's and the county's perspective. Um, there is a traffic light at Harvest Lane and, and, um, Hayden Bridge Road. So that does add a measure of safety to have a, a signalized crossing there. Um, as opposed to just a pedestrian beacon or just a signed crosswalk. Um, so those school operations are always forefront of the cons- of, of concern for the city's, um, traffic safety um, considerations. As to whether. um considerations. As to whether there may be a new use on the site that conflicts with that, um that's, I guess, it's hard to say, um because I guess depending upon the type of medical offices or clinics, they might be um have peak hours of operation that are more daytime than folder times for the schools, um but they may very well um have operational hours that will carry through school hours as well. So it's, it's hard to say um how that might affect school traffic.
Uh Christina, is here.
Typically, um just drawing back to the criteria of approval, typically, safety would be analyzed as under the criteria of approval for site plan review, which is that specific change of use comes in and goes through that type two review process Andy mentioned earlier. Part of the criteria of approval for that specific, once a specific development, um and you know, the specific use comes forward, it has to be consistent with the city's um transportation and transportation network standards, which can include um includes a requirement for a traffic um impact study, similar to the one that the um applicant submitted with this application, but more geared toward the specific um like turning movements and access and driveway, access in and out and queuing distances and those types of safety issues. Typically, that's required for um developments that generate a thousand trips or more per day um or a hundred peak hour trips, which is unlikely for this size site, but there's also um an allowance that we can apply the commercial development if there are known traffic safety um concerns associated with a proposed development. So if our, the city staff who do the transportation analysis, see an application come in for a use that they expect could cause conflict and safety issues with school traffic, that's a situation where we can require more analysis of those safety issues on the site plan review and review in the detail of what the development looks like. Um as opposed to at a, the higher level um in a zone change and I'm not sure if there are policies in the staff report that were directed specifically at safety for neighborhood commercial, but um otherwise, the public facilities is focused on capacity of those public facilities and less on specific safety, because I think so much of that depends on which used to sites to locate there and, you know, development level specifics we don't have right now.
So my understanding is that um if a different use was proposed down the road um for this site, if this um zone change was to happen for the specific parcel. Um and maybe five years down the road, the medical office isn't working out, they want to change the um the z- they want to change the use to potentially something else that works within the the neighborhood commercial um zoning that um it wouldn't necessarily come back to this body, but the neighbors would be notified of that. Staff would also look at the traffic impacts and if further um uh changes are or or a further study is needed um or criteria of approval are needed for that specific change of use.
That's correct.
And um one final question, just I I, we heard um some testimony about um particular concerns about both housing uses and uh potential restaurants or bars. I know this is kind of a a big ask, Andy, but off the top of your head, do you have a sense for how many um peak hour trips might be generated by a a re- a neighborhood restaurant or bar?
Uh I guess it depends on the size of the restaurant um and food service. You know, depending upon it's how it's, it, they tend to be fairly high traffic generators. Um admittedly, especially if it's a fast food with a drive-through or something like that, as opposed to like a, you know, like a sit-down restaurant. Um so all of those restaurants have their own traffic patterns and they're called out in the um the ITU, the Institute of Traffic Engineers manual, and there's rates associated with each kind, so it's it's um I, it would be difficult to speculate. But it would, they would generate their own traffic patterns and impacts based on the size of facility and and how their um their operational characteristics. Um so if they were to come back um with they being the developer, were to come back with either we're converting part of the building to eating space, a restaurant or tavern, or we're going to build something new on the site because we don't need all the parking spaces, for example. Um both of those scenarios would require revisitation of the whole trip, trip, you know, the traffic impact um characteristics of the site and how it's changing, whether it's an incremental change um or if it's going to be a wholesale change because the site's being entirely re- redeveloped. Um so it would happen, it 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 would be an increase over the medical office use on, based on a square footage basis. The quantitative amount is a sliding scale to based on how much of the area is um allocated to a restaurant space.
Thank you. That that's helpful. And I think um knowing that the the any potential different uses would be um would all be within that scale based on on um the size and the the um uh of any potential uh future use. Um it seems to me reasonable to assume that a- any um potential restaurant or bar usage that would be worth renovating um would generate more um trips than the um voluntary trip cap that the the applicant is proposing. I know we're taking them at their word, that they would, they would um voluntarily um opt into a trip cap, but um just wanted to
That that is, the trip cap is self-limiting and it would, it's, it's a little above what is anticipated for the medical clinic offer- operations. Um but not very much. And so it would just be, you know, a slight change or a reconfiguration of the building or a new user um could either reach or exceed that, and that would, that would be something that have to be reevaluated.
That is helpful. Thank you, Andy and Christina.
One thing that's not relevant to the zone change but may be helpful to the neighborhood, um people that have offer comments need to know is that the city council doesn't make decisions on liquor licenses, but the city council provides their recommendation to O L C C um for all new liquor licenses. So if just in the future, if there were to be a bar or restaurant locating in a commercial or neighborhood commercial area that's very close to residences, um that can be, we don't mail notice to surrounding property owners, but that could be tracked through um paying attention to the city council packets and um people can make comments to the city council if they have concerns about particular um regarding the concern about having a a bar close to a school in a residential neighborhood, if that was something that came up in the future.
Excellent. Thank you, Christina.
I'd just like to offer one thing, and that is, it's possible that the medical office could incorporate a coffee bar for their employees and patrons or, you know, um I guess patients or possibly a cafeteria. So there, it's possible that there could be some type of um eating facility of limited scope that would still fit within the overall trip um that's anticipated, um because there will be a number of employees at the site, so it's reasonable to expect there could potentially be some type of internal uh cafeteria or food service, not necessarily outward facing or um something that would be deliberately generating customers uh just to come there for the food service. So that's possible that it might be a secondary element to the medical offices, but not as a standalone restaurant. That's not what's currently being proposed. Hopefully that makes sense.
That does. That's very helpful. Um any other additional questions from the planning commission? Would we like to close the public hearing um and or public record? Or um continue holding the record open to another date or the hearing open to another date, um open to a motion?
A discussion?
Um uh well, so what we'll first do is, oh.
Did we, did we provide the applicant a final opportunity for rebuttal? Okay, I just missed it. Sorry. Um.
Before all of the questions happened, I didn't think I needed to provide rebuttal.
Yeah. I think that tho- those questions did raise new um, raised some new concerns and evidence. So if you want an opportunity to provide rebuttal now, I, that would be appropriate. Testing.
Yeah, we could do that. Thank you.
Well, without going to a lot of detail with all the ins and outs, um the the client that we have uh interested in the property is a medical uh laboratory, and so that's the plan uh for the site, you know, at this point. I understand that's not germane necessarily to the zone change, uh because zone change is independent of that. But I I think I wanted to just offer the maybe reminder that we're asking for neighborhood commercial zone, not community commercial, not, you know, high-density commercial or or whatever the other ones are. This is neighborhood commercial. Neighborhood commercial does not require an underlying metro plan designation. It's, it's kind of that floating zone that can be located in different areas of the community and neighborhood commercial by its very name is intended to be appropriate for neighborhoods. And so the idea is that you can have small-scale commercial uses within the neighborhood that's appropriate for residential areas. I guess I just wanted to remind um us all of that, um because that's really, um I think what's appropriate here. And just as an aside, uh churches, which now the Northwood has to do a discretionary use application anytime they ever wanted to do a change to the building are actually permitted outright in neighborhood commercial. So they recognize that um churches are appropriate in neighborhoods. And so, you know, the the church isn't leaving because the building's in disrepair and it's going to get torn down. They're leaving because they've actually outgrown the facility, and so that's why they're building a new one out of Markola and V. So I just wanted to bring that up just as kind of a clarification about just the idea of neighborhood commercial. Thanks.
Thank you. And um just as a reminder, so um we can either ask additional questions of staff or the applicant. We can, if we feel like we have gotten all the information that we need to make a decision, we can, would, we would first do is move to close the public hearing and public record, and then we would have an opportunity to um have a discussion um before making a motion um to um on on the actual application itself. So um what we first need, um barring any other additional questions from the commission is a uh motion to close the public hearing and public record, if we feel like we have all the relevant facts.
I uh I would move to close the public hearing and close the public record.
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Um can we get a roll call for votes, please?
Uh Commissioner Bergen?
Aye.
Commissioner Salazar?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmunk?
Aye.
Commissioner Buck?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries for in favor unanimously, and now we'll move on to discussion. Um uh the application, are, do we have any um discussion points or are we ready for a motion um on the application itself?
So if I could, um so, I mean, they've met all the criteria, right? I mean, we um they've met all the criteria for uh this, this zone change, and so we we were um help me with this. We're pretty much bound to do this in terms of uh um their presentation.
It would be up to us if um if there are any concerns that you have that the criteria have not been met, then that is what we are um deciding on. Um but if you feel that the applicable criteria have been met for this particular zone change, um then um that is what, what we're deciding is really if the criteria are met. Obviously, there are other um development factors outside of the zone change, but what is germane to us is the um zone um map, zoning map amendment from residential to commercial, neighborhood commercial. Um but if you have any um concerns um or just thoughts outside of that um that don't weigh particularly on um your decision to um your decision on this application, then this is a chance to um let those thoughts be known for both the public and for the applicant um as they move through their process if they get approved.
Appreciate that.
Um.
Commissioner Buck?
Thank you, Chair. Uh and just, just to kind of point out, um uh I I feel like there's been um a a fairly adequate job tonight of of expressing, you know, po- potential concerns, you know, on, on a lot of different fronts, which are all part of the public record. So going forward in the future, if this were to ever get relooked at for any other purpose, all of these are matter of public records. So this discussion um could be reviewed uh at that time as well.
Again, um in terms of discussion, um it is my opinion that the criteria of approval have been met. I think staff has done a good job of um of presenting that information, that the criteria of approval for um this zone map amendment, I think we could have, it would be a different discussion if the um the uh voluntary trip cap um was, could be a a criteria for approval. Um but unfortunately, that's not germane to this discussion. Luckily, I um hope that, um I know we've heard some um uh potential concern from uh neighbors in the public. I hope the applicant takes that to heart. And I do believe that a um, a voluntary trip cap would help, hopefully, help to alleviate some of the concerns that we've heard from neighbors, especially around um the potential um uh trips that could be generated by other theoretical uses um at the site. All right, um hearing no other uh discussion from the commission, um do we have a motion?
I move to adopt the order that is in the agenda packet as attachment six for this item.
A second.
Clarify that um that is with the changes that staff um showed on screen earlier to the staff report. Yes, thank you for that clarification.
Um would you mind, um Commissioner Bergen, um just making that clear that the um whether you're moving to um adopt the order in the agenda packet or as um as changed as uh Christina mentioned.
That's changed.
Has changed.
Yes, I can restate the motion if necessary.
Thank you.
I move to adopt the order that is in um the agenda pack, uh agenda packet, excuse me, as attachment six for this item with the corrections as presented by staff this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, um Commissioner Bergen and Commissioner Buck. Um could we have a roll call for votes?
Uh Chair Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bergen?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmunk?
Aye.
And Commissioner Buck?
Aye.
All right, the motion um carries unanimously for in favor. Um thank you to the applicant. Thank you to everyone who's provided testimony as well. Really take your um concerns into consideration when we're making these decisions. Um all right, and next is um items of business from the planning commission. Um I believe we have um reports from the city council meetings. Um Commissioner Buck, I believe that you had the last um meeting?
On the seventeenth, yes. Uh you ready for that now, Chair?
Yes.
Okay. So um it was a very brief meeting, uh twenty-one minutes and forty-eight seconds. Uh so they covered two uh topics. Uh the first was they heard from um Sean Highland uh about some inconsistencies with application fees and uh um and 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 other, and other um charges with uh applications for site uh for his work site um inconsistent with Eugene and other uh other areas. He asked for some consistency with that, um because it was um impacting his, his ability to progress forward. And the council said that uh further research by staff was needed um uh to address his questions. So uh sounds as being taken into consideration. Uh the second um the second piece was uh staff presented um their work on uh the the ongoing assessment of the levies. And uh in particular, um the response to uh were a breach to occur. And uh that's an ongoing process. Nothing definitive was reported. Um it was noted by uh a counselor or fishery that um it's of note that we're talking about what happens if we have a breach rather than why are we not working to prevent a breach in the first place? Um and it sounds like that's Um, and it sounds like that's uh in the works down the road as well.
Commissioner Buck, um, I had um the pleasure of watching the work session um for both the city council and SEDA on the twenty-third. And in that uh work session, um, the council considered two items. One was um. Their continued work on a potential um. Uh, camping ordinance in the city. Um, so they were talking about um. In this particular work session, this is um. An item that they'll be uh working on for the next um several weeks, but um. In, on the twenty-third, what they considered was their outreach plan for a potential camping ordinance as well as um. Uh. Public information and um also uh. Inventory of public lands and um the different uses such as um. Rights of way, um, public lands that fall within other jurisdictions such as Willamille Park's. Um, and uh, public lands that are owned by the city that would be impacted by a potential camp, camping ordinance. Um, they also got a presentation on um the comprehensive financial statements and recent audit of the city. And um, the findings were there, um, were no findings, which is great news. Um, and uh. They um. Generally, the, the auditor was, was um happy with city processes and it was a, a good um process and good audit for the city. Um. And for the SEDA session, um, that was also a very brief meeting. The um. This, the uh. SEDA board elected uh board chair as councillor Pishnary with councillor Rodley as a vice chair and um. Uh, councillor Doyle as secretary. Um, and then they approved a decision to um. Uh, select a firm, um, a team for the master planning um. Project of the Glenwood uh zone. And um, that team will consist of Raul Broca Architects, and I forget the name of the other firm, if it needs.
Walker Macy.
Walker Macy, yes. Alright, um, so that is, that was the twenty-third and we didn't have a meeting um on the thirtieth and Commissioner Thompson. Um, will be able to brief us next meeting on the meeting um on February sixth. Do we have any other business from the planning commission? Alright, um, any business from the development and public works department?
The only thing I have to report is about your next meeting. There will not be another meeting this February. Um, I am not yet sure about March seventh. Um, which would be in a month. We will for sure have one on March twenty-first. So you'll have the rest of the month off, um, and then stay tuned for. Whether you meet March in the, twice in March or just the one time. We'll have, let's see how things come together.
Alright, thank you Sandy. And once again, thanks to all the staff for, um, yeah, for helping us through, through our meetings and for um the great presentation today. So. Um, with that, I hereby adjourn the planning commission regularly.
Thanks for your patience.
Yeah. And um. They wanted to get.
Yes.